2019 meeting of the Cape Elizabeth Town Council would please have the roll call.
Chairman Garvin?
Here.
Councillor Adams?
Here.
Councillor Devereaux?
Here.
Councillor Gabrielson?
Here.
Councillor Caitlin Jordan?
Councillor Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
And Councillor Straw?
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag? The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Are there any councillors with any reports or correspondence at this point? Councillor Devereaux?
First, I'd just like to mention that some of you may have noticed that our councillor, Randall, is now councillor Adams. She's a newlywed, and I'd like to come -- the whole council would like to congratulate her on her marriage.
Thank you.
And thank you for moving up in the roll call. That's a nice switch. Second, I attended our Bridges of Friendship Photography exhibit that was at the Thomas Morell Library. It was a celebration of our 30th anniversary of -- celebrating this 30th anniversary with our sister city, Archangel, in Russia. So there was photography from photographers here in Cape and other greater Portland cities, along with Archangel, Russia. They presented us with a letter that's dated July 14, 1987, an original letter from the town of Cape Elizabeth that established this relationship. So I wanted to bring that and give that to the council. And I'd really like to thank Dan Glover and Dennis Morote for putting together a wonderful exhibition and continuing this friendship with our sister city in Russia. I also have one more announcement. We have a Maine bicentennial celebration committee that we're putting together. At our last town council meeting, the council approved the formation of the Maine bicentennial celebration committee. And later this evening, the council will consider the committee charge. The charge calls for a committee of five people, appointee of the town council, school board, and the Cape Elizabeth Historical Preservation Society. In addition, there's -- would be an appointment for two residents of Cape Elizabeth in this process. So in order to move forward with the applications, they are on our website, correct? So the website has these applications. The deadline to submit them is this Friday, the 18th. And the committee will be from December 1, 2019, to December 1st, 31st, 2020. The nominations will be forwarded to the town council for our November meeting. So I'd like to encourage anyone who's interested in the Maine centennial celebration to come aboard, help us with that. We're also in the process of our annual appointments. So applications are being accepted now for positions on various town boards and committees. So I'd ask that any interested residents apply at capeelizabeth.com. That deadline is 4:00 PM November 1. Those nominations will be forwarded to the town council in December. So again, I'd really like to encourage you to join a committee. It's, as you can see, it's a wonderful process, and we really enjoy having other residents being involved on the committees. So please join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor. I'd like to echo that point. I think at least three, if not four, of the current members of the council have all served on committees in town. And it's a great way to be involved. And if you have any questions or interests, don't hesitate to reach out to either the council or anybody on those committees currently or who has served in the past. I know that everybody who does serve is more than happy to relay their experience and tell you about the commitment that's involved. In many cases, it's not too much of a commitment. So if it's something that's of interest, please don't hesitate to come forward. We appreciate everybody's time and service of their talents. Any other reports or correspondence? Seeing none, we'll move on to the --
I have an additional item. I was wondering if councillor Garvin was going to bring this up. At our last workshop meeting on September 24, we had a town council workshop meeting. Before the meeting began, I asked councillor Garvin about two emails that I received that came from his Cape Elizabeth email. They were regarding the schools' building committee. He said that he hadn't sent them to me, so I showed them to him. Our town manager and town clerk were both present at that meeting. And he looked at them and said that he did not send those emails. So I'm very concerned that we may have a hacking issue with our town council emails. The emails came directly -- it looked like it came directly from his town council email. There were several people that were on that email list that had all been on the needs assessment committee. One person that I've talked to said that she actually received the email also.
So I think I'm aware of what the problem is, actually.
You are.
So it had to do with the calendaring function and how I replied to that calendar invite. So that's what generated the response, and I didn't realize that that's what had happened.
Okay. It got me worried that maybe we had been hacked and we needed to look at that. Okay.
Yeah. Matt and I had followed up after the fact. And sorry for not updating you further on it, but yeah. So as most people are probably used to with email and calendaring functions, you can craft an email or reply to a calendar invite, and that's what -- when I declined that, that's what prompted that.
Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you for remembering that. Anything else? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Finance Committee report. Councillor Straw?
So you should all have the dashboard and the various financial reports, including the appropriation control, the expense distribution, the revenue control, and the revenue distribution. I wanted to highlight two things this month. So first off, if you look at the dashboard, you'll note with our revenues, between the various revenues coming into the various funds and whatnot, we're running about $600,000 ahead of where we were last year already for revenue, and we're only in -- this is through the end of September. So just wanted to highlight that we're doing well from that perspective. The other item I wanted to flag is the revenue distribution, which basically lists transaction after transaction after transaction. I just wanted to highlight the good work of the town manager and the finance director. I noted this is really getting into the nitty-gritty, but the things going on behind the scenes that most people will never notice. We've begun tracking a number of our transactions on a daily basis as opposed to grouping together deposits on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, and it makes for keeping track of what's going on a lot easier. So I just wanted to highlight that. I saw it. I'm aware of it. I appreciate it. I recognize the hard work you guys are doing behind the scenes, so thank you for that. So with that said, anyone have any questions?
Matt, was there anything you want to add?
Just one item of, I guess, information I'd like to point out. It's specific to the revenues at the -- with that pay and display that's been generated at the fort. Currently, through the month of September, we're at $226,700 in revenue. That's net revenue. Our anticipated amount that we're looking to receive was $300,000. So once we get through the month of October and book that revenue, we should be close to or at goal for the year, but with two months left to go, as well with May and June in the next calendar year, but still in the same fiscal year. So there's been a lot of great work that's taken place there from a lot of different folks on our staff, including Bob Malley, Chris Cutter, who's here this evening as well, and Kathy Raftis, and all the staff down at the fort. They've done a really good job helping people get up to speed with that and have made this really a successful implementation of the program, and it shows in the numbers. So we're very pleased with that, to report on that on the dashboard. So we'll update that again as we go through. But after this month, November 1, the pay and display ceases for the wintertime, so we should have our hard numbers shortly thereafter. If not November council meeting, we'll have them wrapped up at least for the calendar year for the December council meeting.
Thank you very much. Any questions for either Councillor Straw or Matt? Anything else you want to add, Chris?
Nope.
Great. Thank you very much. Next up is an opportunity for any citizens here wishing to speak to something that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak to anything not currently on our agenda? Seeing none, we'll go to the town manager's monthly report. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to be brief, looking at the size of this evening's agenda and knowing that you have a lot of work to do. But there's some important information to bring forward. And first and foremost is that fall cleanup is ongoing, with disposal fees being waived for residential users at their recycling facility from October 12 to the 28th. And as of this Sunday, the 20th, the recycling center will be open on Sundays until November 10. So we'll try to work within our resident schedule. Take advantage of the opportunity while you may.
For the lawn and leaf waste, not for full service.
Yeah, not for the -- yeah, not for -- sorry. Yeah, important point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, for, you know, to help get rid of your yard waste. That does accumulate right now, and probably there'll be more on the ground after tomorrow. So there will be an informational meeting next Wednesday on Phase 3 of the Scott Dyer Road reconstruction project. That'll be at 7:00 PM here at the Town Hall. Absentee voting is also being -- is open now here at the Town Hall, and it will be until October 31. And last week, Deborah Lane and I took the opportunity to sit down with Superintendent Wolfram to discuss security issues and concerns during the election process. Over the next year, there'll be three different -- actually, if you count November 5, there'll be four elections that will take place, or four voting opportunities that will take place. We have November 5 election, which will be coming up. Schools will be closed on that day, but then there'll also be a --
Primary.
Primary, sorry. Thank you. I lost words. There'll be a primary in March. The schools will be open on that day. And then there'll also be the school voting in June, or our annual voting in June, and then again, the presidential election, which will take place next November. Out of those, the students will be in session on a couple of those different days. So what we're looking to do is try to find a way to provide a greater level of security, because it does take place at the high school, in the gymnasium. So we're meeting with Chief Fenton this week to come up with some strategies that'll help, due to some concerns that came up from inside of the facility and trying to contain voters within the area that we need to have, and also to manage parking, because we did run into an issue last year during the June vote, when there was a lacrosse game that was scheduled at the same -- playoff game scheduled at the same time as the vote was taking place. And in the evening, it filled the parking lots. So some residents expressed their frustration. So we're trying to look at parking management and those types of issues going forward. So if you see additional security this November 5 at the schools, please don't be alarmed. We're just trying to find a few different ways to test and adjust to see what will be the best method to use in that situation. That being said, the winter is coming, and our animals out there are interested in a lot of different things to get ready for winter. I had an interesting conversation with Jerry Vilstein, who's a conservation biologist. She did a presentation a couple weeks ago at the library regarding specifically the coyotes. And she called me as a follow-up to express her concern and wanted me to convey to folks, please do not feed the wild animals, because that gives them bad habits. They come thinking that humans are equal to food, and there's a lot of, you know, transmission for rabies that will take place, and it brings you a greater level of exposure than you should. So we'll have an informational article up on the website shortly, following up from our conversation that I had with her. And finally, I would like to say and take the opportunity to congratulate Jeff Cadet of the Cape Elizabeth Police Department, who today was promoted to sergeant. So it's a very significant advancement for Jeff, and we were already swearing in, where Deborah swore him in, and we had a nice event at the fire department. So congratulations to Jeff. He's been here for, like, 18 years, and it's quite an honor for him. And we look forward to having him for much longer. So that's my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Matt? Seeing none, we'll move on. Review of the draft minutes of the meeting held September 9, 2019. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as included in the agenda?
So moved.
Councillor Straw is our second.
Stephanie.
Councillor Jordan, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Next up, we have a number of agenda items that we're going to try something that we haven't done regularly, but it's a consent agenda or consent calendar. So for items number 136 through number 142, we're going to present the opportunity for the council to vote on those and block, in the interest of moving the meeting along. And most of these are of an administrative nature. Any councillor has the opportunity to ask that any of these items be considered separately, so I'll ask that at this time.
I think --
Councillor Jordan?
I think one of them needs to be considered separately, because there's an error.
Which one is that?
On, I think this goes with, because it's part of 141. It's the one that talks about the referral of items to the ordinance committee, et cetera, items 30 through 82. And there's an 86 and not an 82 that refers to the ordinance committee looking at administrative tracking for short-term rentals. So I think it needs --
So I was going to suggest, for different reasons, that number 141 just be separated altogether anyway?
Okay.
So regardless of the housekeeping things, my recommendations would pull that out.
Yeah, there was something else I needed to talk about.
Is there anything else that anybody wants to pull out?
Yes, I'd like to pull out item 140.
140?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so items 140 and 141 will be considered individually. Remaining are items number 136 through 139. I will give the public a moment to comment on any of these in just a second. I first want to disclose that on item 136, that these properties are in my neighborhood, and I'm an acquaintance of all the property owners. I don't feel that has any bearing on my ability to decision on this without bias. Similarly, on item number 138, I'm an acquaintance of the property owners at 11 Hemlock Hill. Nobody has any concerns with those?
Just that I believe 142 is also still on the consent agenda.
Oh, yes, thank you. Yep. Thank you very much.
I would move the consent agenda subject to the two items noted.
Before you do that, I'm going to ask if anybody wants to comment on anything included in that consent agenda, which is items 136, 137, 138, 139, and 142. And I'll read. One is consideration of drainage easements in the Oakhurst and Wood Roads neighborhood. Another is consideration of drainage and property easements for Scott Dyer Road Phase 2. Another is consideration of drainage easements for Hemlock Hill. Our general assistance appendices, setting that to a public hearing at our November meeting. And then the municipal election warrant is item number 142. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak on any of those items that I just listed? Seeing none. Councillor Gabrielson has moved that we approve that agenda on block. Is there a second? Councillor Jordan, is there any discussion? Councillor Devereaux?
I'd just like to say that I intend to vote in the affirmative on these, because I've reviewed them, and the easements all looked to be in order. They were taken care of by our town attorney. They were signed by the homeowners. So they all look to be in order and will be important, an important part of what happens with that community there in Oakhurst. As for the general assistance appendices, that's something that we approve yearly, and it's something that we need to continue approving. It looks like it's fine. And as for the municipal election warrant, I think that's something that we all agree we have elections coming up, and it's something that I will be voting to approve.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Particularly on the property easement ones, I want to commend Bob Malley, who's here tonight, for the hard work that he and staff have done on working with the property owners to come up with acceptable arrangements in all those cases. I know in particular, as I mentioned, one of them is in my neighborhood, and a great deal of time and effort and energy was spent on not only, you know, diagnosing issues related to the drainage problems, but then working to secure the easements with the property owners. So thank you very much, Bob. Appreciate the time and effort put in on that. Any other discussion of these? Seeing none. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll go to item number 140-2019. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none. We're looking to appoint to a committee at the request of the superintendent and school board, two members of the town council, that they be members of the committee working on the school building needs, the school building needs that came out of the assessment report that has been done to date. At our workshop last month, it was the consensus, the council, that myself and councillor Adams be named to represent this committee. So I'm looking for a motion to that effect. Councillor Gabrielson, is there a second? Councillor Jordan, discussion? Councillor Devereaux?
Yes. I don't believe there was consensus at that meeting. I wasn't in consensus with it. And I'd just like to let the public know that we had, again, a workshop, the town council workshop on September 24. It began with councillor Garvin beginning the meeting, saying that a committee had been formed for the schools to look at the buildings. Previous committee had been formed, which was called the Needs Assessment Committee, and councillor Garvin and I were both on that committee. As councillor Garvin began the meeting, he said that he had spoken with the school superintendent and that she had requested that he be on the committee. I have some concerns about that. I don't know if that's appropriate for our superintendent to request or cherry-pick councillors to be on committees. Second of all, looking at our agenda, again, it says that chairman Garvin received a request from Superintendent Wolfram requesting two representatives to serve on this newly-formed building committee. It's my understanding, looking at the town charter, that the superintendent speaks with our town manager and works out any committees. Also, this is a school committee, not a town council committee. So I'm looking at -- I'm concerned about our transparency, and I'd like to make sure that we're extremely transparent between the town council and the school. As the meeting went on, councillor Garvin said he would like to be a member of that committee, and that there was a date in October, the 22nd. That was a mandatory meeting. Councillor Straw immediately spoke up and said he felt that he had a conflict. His wife is on the board. At that time, councillor Adams spoke up and said that she could not attend that October 22 meeting. I then spoke up and said I would like to attend it, since I would like to be on it, since I was on the previous committee. And councillor Garvin stated that the councillor chosen had to not have any children in the school system. I stated that my daughter had graduated and was no longer in school. So I don't know who made the rule, whether it was councillor Garvin or the superintendent. And if we follow that logic, then there's several people on this town council table here that should not be voting on our school budget. So councillor Garvin then proceeded to ask councillor Jordan, both the Jordans and councillor Adams, if they would be on the committee. Councillor Adams reluctantly, it seemed that she reluctantly agreed, but she could not attend the mandatory meeting. Councillor Jordan, Penny Jordan, said that she would attend it. I'm very concerned why this happened, and why it is that my having a child who went through our school system disqualifies me from being on a committee that I was previously on. I attended every meeting. I could attend every meeting. I was a trustee of a four-year college, where we went through the same process of looking at buildings and how we were going to add on, build. So I've been through the process. So I'd like to direct the question to councillor Garvin as to why my qualifications aren't enough to be on this committee, and why someone with, even though he has a child in school and is on the committee, why Mr. Councillor Gabrielson or myself could not be on the committee?
I'm happy to respond to you. I am, first of all, extremely surprised by what I feel is absolutely a broadside attack at me personally, and something that frankly completely misrepresents the context and outcome of the workshop that we had. So I'll be happy to address each of these things that you've just laid out here. The first of which is that at a meeting of the Finance and Chairs Subcommittee, which is a regularly scheduled meeting, the town manager, Sturgis, and the superintendent were asked, that's when this committee was presented to us, and our participation was requested. The superintendent requested that the chairman of, chairperson of the council be one of the two, not me specifically. So in so much as that it felt appropriate to her that the chair of both bodies be on that committee, that's what she requested. It's perfectly within the purview of the council to decline that request. As you said, there's nothing in the charter that lets her cherry-pick who she wants or doesn't want on the committee. I was simply communicating that the chair of the council was requested. If I somehow misspoke or that was misinterpreted to be that me individually was requested, I apologize for any misunderstanding as far as that goes. Similarly, I did not at all state that it was a requirement that one or both of the councillors not have any children in the school. I was simply offering my individual opinion that it would be, it would make the most representative and well-balanced committee if we had a representation of committee members that both did and did not. I think that that, personally, you know, we're here to represent the entire town, that, you know, that goes much further towards achieving that representation when you try and have councillors that represent all of that. Lastly, I would say that none of these things were voiced in the workshop itself, or to me personally afterwards, at which point I would have been happy to address any of them with you. I feel like your approach here tonight is both grandstanding and frankly inappropriate, and I'm disappointed that that's how you interpreted my position and my management of the meeting. Is there any other discussion?
I would like to reply.
Is there any other discussion?
I just would like to add that I, at first, was reluctant, but after having thought about it, this was a big issue on the council previously with the school budget and looking at the school building needs. And I would like an opportunity to participate in this committee. And I, my schedule has changed, so I will now be available for the October 22 meeting, which I've conveyed to councillor Garvin.
Councillor Jordan?
I want to reiterate what chairman Garvin just said. I truly believe that if you had an issue, you should have gone to him directly versus using this council meeting as a way to present what I feel, and I was at that workshop, that whenever councillor Garvin puts anything forward, it's thoughts and ideas. It's his opinion. He doesn't push an agenda. What I heard, and what I thought was pretty logical, is that yes, it does make sense to balance that committee. And I also heard, just as chairman Garvin just said, that the superintendent asked for participation of the chairman, not Jamie Garvin. And so I also felt that the two names put forward really would be good to rep -- And so, I also felt that the two names put forward really would be good representatives of the council on that committee. And so, where I would go at this point in time is making a motion that Councillor Adams and Chairman Garvin are the representatives on the committee.
We already have a motion on the floor to that effect. Is there any other discussion? Councillor Straw?
The one aspect of all that that piqued my interest is, is this a school committee or a town council committee? And if it's a school committee, I just think the motion perhaps should be that we recommend because we technically don't, if it's a school committee, we can't appoint. You get what I'm getting at? So, in other words, if it's totally a school committee...
That is the motion.
Yeah, all right.
The motion is that Chairman Garvin, Councillor Adams be recommended, to be considered to represent the council on the building committee. That is the motion. Is there any other discussion?
Sorry. So, the motion is that they, we're recommending them to the school board, that they be considered as our representatives, right?
Right now, it says appoint.
Yep. So, I'm okay with, and a yes on recommending Garvin and Adams as the appointees.
The language in the agenda which was moved was that be recommend that Chairman Garvin and Councillor Adams be considered to represent the council on the building committee.
Got it. And that's, so that's the motion? All right. Got it.
All right, I would just like to respond. I'm sorry that you feel that it's grandstanding. I have not seen you since our last workshop meeting. This was something that I thought about a lot after I left the meeting, and was very disappointed that, because I had a child in the school, that I was not someone that could be on the committee, even though I had the continuity of being on the committee. So, and you didn't say whose rule that was or where that came from.
Councillor Jordan?
I'd like to finish.
Councillor Deveraux?
And so, that was disturbing to me, and I appreciate your clarification. However, I still disagree. I don't think that is, that that should be a qualification of whether a town councillor is on a committee, whether they've had a child in school or not. I don't think that that should be one of our qualifications.
Councillor Jordan?
I, this is all I'm going to say. You could have put forward at that workshop that that is how you felt, and we could have had a conversation about that. It didn't come up. And I think that we put forward two people that I think can represent the council. If you had come forward in that workshop and been as adamant as you are right now, I would have had the conversation, but you didn't.
That's true. I didn't.
I also just want to reiterate that it was neither presented as a rule or requirement. It was my suggestion or recommendation that the best composition of councillors to be recommended for the committee would be a more balanced representation. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Post? Thank you. Next up is item number 141, implementation steps regarding the comprehensive plan. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none. So, after extensive work on the comprehensive plan the past couple of years, we had a workshop on the 24th where we went through a lot of the detail in that plan, laying out specific items that are considered action items to carry out and implement aspects of that plan. A number of those things are here represented on the agenda tonight regarding specific referral to committees or boards for them to pick up as agenda items. So, those are all listed here. Councillor Jordan, you had a concern about simply that typo, or...
I have two things, actually.
Can we address the first, the type, just so we can clarify that?
Yeah. It's at the top. It says 30 and 82 referred to the ordinance committee.
Yeah.
It should be 30 and 86.
Well, both 30 and 82 are right there below it, and I think 86 is a separate item.
Okay, okay.
So, I think that's good.
Didn't...
1051.
Existing non-conforming lots, but the 86 was referred also, correct, to ordinance committee?
Yes, as is 51. But I think 30 and 82, because they're related topically, I think that's why they're grouped there.
Oh, okay.
So, they're both having to do with lot size and infill lots and stuff like that, whereas the others are different specific topics. So, are we good on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Your second concern, I suspect I know where you're going with this, but go ahead.
Down to 86?
Yep.
I really think that the way that this is worded is narrower than the conversations we are having, because this seems to talk a lot about administrative tracking and the short-term rentals themselves versus what we had talked about in other meetings, is that we're really looking at the ordinance itself. And so, it needs to reflect that we're going broader than what this says.
I agree. My recommendation would be that we take 86 out of this list, unless anybody has any concerns with any of the others on the specific list. Councillor Straw?
All right.
Well, let me actually just finish that point. Actually, so my recommendation would be that we take 86 out, address 86 separately, and then return to the rest of the list. So, go ahead, Councillor Gabelson.
I was just going to say, I agree. I think, I believe this is the language that comes from the comprehensive...
It is.
It is, exactly.
I was going to make that point, so.
Exactly.
But yes, I agree that the remit to the ordinance committee is now broader than that statement.
So, would somebody like to make an amendment? Somebody like to propose an amendment to item number 141, removing number 86 from the list to be dealt with separately?
Is there a motion on the table?
Is there a motion? No, okay.
So, I would, I would just move that we, it's a long, long motion. I move that we refer items 30, 82, 47, 48, 51, 64, and 72 as laid out in the draft recommendation, and that we can consider 86, 72.
What did you leave out? Just 86? Okay.
Yeah.
So, there's a motion to move these to their respective committees and boards as included in the agenda. Is there a second for that?
A second.
Councillor Jordan, discussion on that? Yes?
Just noting that although I'm voting for this, it's under the understanding that it's going for discussion and consideration at the subcommittees, obviously, at which point we may recognize that some of them were going to go a different route.
Thank you very much. To clarify, these are to start the work process by all these different advisory committees that then will come back with their recommendations to the council, many of which will involve hearings. All the meetings are open and to the public, and participation is encouraged if you have an opinion on any of these items. So, there's a motion and second for approving 30 down the list through 72. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Separately, we still have number 86. My recommendation, I'm looking for a motion to refer to the ordinance committee a thorough and comprehensive review of the current short-term rental ordinances, inclusive of the passage here that was already listed, because that was the specific action language from the comp plan, but also to include a broader review of the entire ordinance.
So moved. That's a good one.
Councillor Jordan, is there a second? Councillor Straw, is there any discussion? Councillor Randall?
Just for people in the audience and those listening, we've gotten a lot of really good feedback from residents about the short-term rentals. We appreciate it, and we would invite anyone who's interested to come to the ordinance meeting once it's scheduled, because that's where we really start working on this stuff. And it's incredibly helpful to have people there who are living in these neighborhoods and can provide us with additional insight as we're talking about the ordinance itself. So, please do stay in touch. If you have questions about when the meeting is, it will be posted.
It's the 28th.
Oh, right. We have already scheduled it. It's the 28th.
28 o'clock.
Of October. It's at 7:00, right? We did that one at 7:00?
Yes.
And we really appreciate having feedback, so please do come.
Thank you, Councillor Adams. I agree, and as I said before, I think it'll likely be one of several meetings that the ordinance committee has on this. I don't think that this is all going to be dealt with and wrapped up in one meeting. If you're not able to participate at the meeting itself, you're more than welcome to continue to send us correspondence. As Councillor Adams said, we've gotten, I don't know, probably about 15 or so emails with people, various views that are being expressed about the existing short-term rental ordinance and changes that they think need to be made and things like that. So, this is obviously an important issue to a number of people in town, and we encourage you to stay actively engaged on it. I'll take your question.
Thank you. Just a quick reminder, Mr. Chairman. Just so I understand it, number 86 obviously was extremely limited in its scope and its definition, and it sounds like what I'm hearing is that the council is now unilaterally, the majority decided to, in essence, if you will rewrite that definition and send that to committees separately.
The motion on the floor is to charge the ordinance committee with a complete and thorough review of the existing ordinance, so.
My concern is that that wasn't what was originally stated in the definition of 86. It was obviously very young and still reverting administrative tracking. So, what you're doing wasn't defined as that.
Councillor Straw?
So, what we had listed for 86 was a draft motion, the actual subject matter being obviously short-term rental activity. We're not, to my knowledge, under any obligation to pass only the motion that's listed in the document. We've put out there to the general public that we are going to be having a motion tonight on a number of things involving implementing the comprehensive plan. One of the things is going to deal with short-term rental activity. Via our discussion that we just had, a majority of us said, well, we don't want this draft motion. We want something a little broader with, based on what we'd previously discussed at other public meetings. So, a majority of us, after giving notice, from my perspective, to the general public that we're going to talk about the comprehensive plan tonight, and that we, that it will include short-term rental activity, rather than adopting the draft motion, we have instead chosen to come up with a new motion that is broader, but nevertheless goes to the same point from my perspective, which is short-term rental activity.
Thank you, Chris. Other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Councillor Deveraux, do you have...
I would just like to say that this is a complete and thorough review by the ordinance committee, so there'll be input by people, and that's what Councillor Adams was saying, that you can go to the meetings, you can give input. So, we'll still, we still want lots of input. We've been getting lots of input. We want more input. And so, there'll be more opportunities before an actual ordinance is voted on. So, this is just that review process.
Any other discussion?
Just quick, two points on that. So, to reiterate that, all this is doing is sending it to a committee for us to have in-depth discussions. It could be that that committee comes back with a recommendation that we make short-term rentals unilaterally allowed with no restrictions whatsoever. We don't know what will come out of that committee. We're sending it off, at which point then there will be in-depth discussions. So, it's not like we're, we're not, we're not making major changes tonight. It's just going off to a subcommittee.
One other point of work, the ordinance committee then decide obviously what the timeline is amongst themselves in terms of how their actions take place. There's no specific timeline. The ordinance committee is to define that timeline.
Correct.
Do you want to explain the process that, I mean, the ordinance committee goes and reviews that. It has to come back to the council. It will then have to be public hearings. There's, it's a long, it's a long process. It's gaining input.
Let me, first, I want to return to order because...
Yeah, sorry.
So, typically, with the ordinance committee or any other committee or board, they're given a charge or a task to review an ordinance or take up an issue of some kind, Fort Williams Committee, what have you. They will, they have regularly scheduled meetings. The ordinance committee has regular meetings. They have meetings that they'll schedule on specific topics such as this. Those meetings are publicly noticed and posted on the town website, meeting calendar. Public is, like I said, encouraged and invited to attend all those meetings to provide input. Within the process of those meetings, you know, if there's need to set subsequent meetings, or they might specifically, you know, request other information or things like that, that's all, all of that takes place in the working meetings, reported back to the council, at which point, at some point, a recommendation on revisions to an ordinance will eventually make it back to the council. We would usually have a workshop meeting on that to more thoroughly discuss and digest the recommended changes that are being proposed, at which point we then bring it back to a meeting to set to a public hearing, an opportunity for the public to come and weigh in, in addition to all those opportunities that they've had within the meetings themselves, before actually going to vote on an ordinance change, at which point, if it passes, it's 30 days after the vote that it would take effect. So, I imagine this will be a roughly, you know, several months-long process where there will be multiple ordinance committee meetings, probably a full town council workshop, ultimately, like I said, a public hearing. I would expect, you know, just guesstimating on the calendar sometime in the first couple of months of 2020.
Those sole town officials of the process in its entirety, it could take anywhere from between six months to a year and a half, which I understand, having been on prior planning boards in town councils, that that's, you know, a good guesstimate, but it's a very wide berth, and for the sake of, I'm sure you can understand the sensitivity of timing, for the sake of operators, especially for ways to affect it windows, and especially if there's significant changes versus minor changes. So, dating and timing, you can, upfront about that process in terms of some constant dating, et cetera, is extremely important to many, many people in Capitol City.
I totally understand that, and this is, I want to end the back and forth, though, at this point, because we're broken from order here. But I will say that, as I've seen in other surrounding communities, I suspect that if there are already changes to be made, one of the things that the ordinance committee will consider is what the effective implementation date of that is. So, when I was just talking about the 30 days post-vote, that's for most general ordinances, but there's plenty of ordinances that the council will vote on where, you know, they'll say this is effective, you know, beginning November 1st or something like that, you know, or what have you. Even the parking plan that we put into effect at Fort Williams was effective on a certain date, so. We do have a motion and a second? Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Next up, item number 143-2019. Portland Headlight Hardscaping Pedestrian Improvements. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none. I see John Mitchell from Mitchell and Associates putting up something on the board over there and getting ready to tell us about the recommendations. Matt, is there anything you want to say to kick this off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Mitchell's getting ready to present. What we have this evening is bringing forward to the council a plan to install some light hardscaping down at the Portland Headlight. What we've had over many years, I guess would be a way to describe it, is areas that have experienced a high level of traffic, traffic that have worn down the grassy areas to the point that, you know, we have some irrigation equipment that has been exposed, and just due to a great deal of traffic. And we're trying to make it a better, safer experience, as well as address the erosion issues that we have had. Met with John earlier this, I guess it'd be the end, middle to the end of summer, to look at a lot of different opportunities that we may have to correct some of the issues that we've engaged down there. He's come forward with a plan, brought it forward to the State Historical Society, where they take a look at that due to the historical significance of Portland Headlight, of course. Then, following up from there, has been, has brought this plan to the Fort Williams Park Committee, who's had a chance to take a look at this and review it, and have come back in favor of it. And so, that's why Mr. Mitchell is here tonight to talk about the elements of the plan. You have a hard copy in front of you that we have this evening. It's also part of the council packing online, so if you'd like to take a look at that and... packing online, so if you'd like to take a look at that and be able to zoom in, get a little greater level of detail, so we can, you can see the elements of which you'd like to discuss. And I think I've said about all of that.
That was a good overview. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mitchell.
Nice to see you, John.
Thank you. John Mitchell, Mitchell and Associates, representing the town for this project. So, just to repeat a couple items that Matt indicated. In 2001, there was a site improvement project around Portland Headlight that included walkways, viewing areas, and some plantings. This was a, the site plan was developed, went to Planning Board, it got approved as a, as a site plan. So, since then, there have, I think everybody realizes, there's been a significant increase in the number of visitors to this area, partly due to the number of tour buses that visit Fort Williams, and also the introduction of cruise ships to Portland. So, this project focuses, focuses on enhancing and upgrading some of the pedestrian areas, particularly the viewing areas. There are, I've labeled, there are three viewing areas, one, two, and three. And as Matt indicated, a lot of the grass areas within these viewing areas has just been overrun and it's bare ground. And there's actually some erosion that takes place during heavy rain events in this viewing area here. There were no pavers in this area here. It was all grass, and a large part of that is bare ground now. So, we've developed a paved area where pedestrians congregate to view and photograph, and then this would be grass, it is a grass area here. And then, viewing area two and three incorporates, or did in the original site plan, some lawn areas and limited paved areas around the, primarily around the fence area. So, we've decided to remove what was lawn and make it all paved. Also included in this project would be relocation of a horn. There's a, there's a horn pedestal that is secured to a concrete slab. That not only is in a dangerous location, because there are kids that get on the horn, decline the horn. It's on a very steep embankment right here. So, we've decided to move the horn in this location here, which is a fenced-in location. And I'm told that it was actually the original location of the horn. So, we've done that. We've also used the bollet and chain, they're very small metal posts with, with chains to help prevent pedestrians from walking on grass areas. We've done that. We've done a small amount of plantings, and we've got one wood bench up next to the gift shop. As Matt also indicated, we have received approval from the Maine Historic Preservation Commission on this design. We've also received approval from the Fort Williams Committee, Fort Williams Park Committee. So, I guess what we are asking the council this evening is a recommendation to go to Planning Board, to go to workshop first, and then a regular meeting. Any questions?
Thank you, John. Any questions for John? Counsel Devereaux?
So, so you're removing all of the grassy areas? Then, we won't have any grassy areas there? Is that what I'm hearing?
We're removing these two grass areas that are here, that are now bare ground. We are incorporating grass in this area.
Oh, it'll be incorporated, okay.
Yes.
Other questions? Discussion? I like the source of the funds. All right. So, we need a motion that authorizes the town manager to refer the improvements as just presented to us, with the funding as presented. Is there a motion? Counsel Gabrielson, is there a second? Counsel Devereaux, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is another Fort Williams item, number 144, proposed commercial vehicle fees at Fort Williams Park. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item? Please come forward. Your name and either address or affiliation, and keep your remarks to about three minutes, if you could.
Good evening. Bill Frappier, resident of Scarborough. My wife Kathy and I own Portland Discovery Land and Sea Tours, the trolley company, and boat tour company in Portland. So, we've been visiting Fort Williams since 1995 as part of our tour. A little late to the party. We're wrapping up a busy cruise ship season, as you all know, I'm quite sure. So, I just got worried about the change in fees just a day or two ago. I haven't been involved in any discussion as a stakeholder prior to that. So, I was just curious. I don't even know what the process is, but I guess my hope is that there's going to be some more discussion before it is finally voted on. And if so, I guess I need to find out how I become part of that conversation. That's really all I had to say.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to speak on I'll just respond to the questions that you asked. I can't remember what month this came up last fall. The council had previously voted to increase, increase substantially the commercial bus and other commercial vehicle fees at the fort. The Fort Williams Park Committee had come forward to us with a recommendation that the council at the time actually went above that recommendation and voted to, to implement a new fee schedule. We, at that point, heard from several other commercial operators that gave us a little bit more information and context to how they set their contracts and things like that, and expressed that there was a lot more lead time that they thought was needed and appropriate to be able to try and implement the types of changes that we were, that we were forecasting with our, the direction of our vote. So, we pulled back somewhat for this season, and, but at that time signaled quite clearly in our discussion that we were looking for the committee to come back to us with a stepped and graduated fee plan that got us up to what we feel is a more appropriate revenue model for the, for the service that's being offered, basically, or being made available. So, that's what the, the timing has been on that. So, I, I, it's, it sounds like you'd not been aware of or, or heard of any of that, so apologize that you weren't, you know, aware of that earlier. But that was sort of, that's sort of the context and background for how we got to here today, so. So, before us, we have the proposal that the Fort Williams Park Committee came back to, which looks at recommended fees for the next three years. We don't have a specific, specific recommended action on this tonight. We can vote to approve it as-is. We can vote to refer this to a workshop to discuss. We can vote to alter the fee schedule as presented. Looking to the council for their desired action here.
Mr. Chairman, if it may be helpful to the, to the council as well, this was a follow-up, obviously, from the spring and the conversations that took place during the budgetary season, but also from conversations with the council over the course of the summer, to say, okay, we need to have a recommendation from the park committee. So, I expressed that to the chairman of the park committee, and he took it up with the, with the committee over the past, I believe, the past two meetings where they, where they reviewed it, and, actually, sorry, September's meeting, where they reviewed it and brought that forward for, for the council. They're meeting again tomorrow night as well. But what they wanted to do was, as you had said, Mr. Chairman, get it, get early onto the curve versus later, where folks, specifically, I know the large motor coach operators had expressed a great amount of concern. They were at the last meeting for the park committee, and they were aware of this change and felt that it was a decent change for them. So, I guess that's why they brought this forward this evening, and following up from the council's, you know, request that they do, A, have the numbers earlier, and B, come forward with a recommendation and a plan for the next three years, which was also expressed to them. So, that's why, that's why you have this here, this evening.
Counsel Strah.
I'm comfortable with it as-is, given that the park commission put a lot of time into it. They did involve a number of the tour operators, it sounds like. And my understanding is that they had previously indicated they wanted some amount of lead time with the fee, so I'm fine with it as presented. And would just note that in considering and thinking about these fees, to the extent anyone needs to explain it to individuals they're working with, we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars rebuilding the parking lot. And we have quotes for rebuilding Shore Road that are running in the million-dollar range, all of which the traffic going up and down Shore Road into the park plays a role in, so.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. It wasn't.
That's it.
I have another question.
I'm good.
One other item ahead, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yep.
On the backside of your sheet there, and what you had in the council agenda, there was a request at the time for the committee to look at it on a, like a per-head basis. So, you could break that down for the council, because I know there was a request from, I think it was Counsel Gabrielson, who had asked for the park committee to do that form of analysis. And that's why you have that, that breakdown as well, and kind of the rationale as to how they kind of backed into the numbers and the recommended amounts that they were, that they were looking at. And then, on the front, would just be an update of the existing schedule that, that the committee had been using, just advancing for those other three years.
Counsel Adams.
I get, I'm, I'm generally comfortable with the direction we're heading in, but I do have some questions for the Fort Williams Park Committee about how they arrived at these numbers. So, I, I would prefer to refer this to a workshop, but also being cognizant of the fact that we do want to get this done quickly. I don't think it would take much time, but I just have some questions for their process.
Other thoughts on that discussion? Counsel Devereaux?
I agree. I'd like to know what their process was and how they counted up the visits per day for the trolley. And I'm, I'm kind of concerned that the trolley is a set fee for three years, where the commercial vehicles is an increasing fee, which seems very appropriate. But my thought is with the trolleys, and we can talk to the person who runs the trolley service, they may be adding more trolleys. There may be more people. So, I don't know if we vote on this now, that in three years from now, that that number would be accurate.
I'm not sure I'm following the point you're making, but.
Well, what they're saying is it would be $30,000 for season pass for the trolleys for three years, each year.
No. It's $7,000 in 2020, $11,000 in 2021, and $15,000 in 2022.
Oh, I'm looking at the season pass down here.
Just a second.
This was an alternative.
It just seems that if there's between $24,000 and $37,000 trolley visitors a year, and at $1 a person, that would average 30,000 a year, but yet, we're looking at a proposal of 7,000?
Can I make a motion?
Yeah.
I move that.
Before you do, Counsel Jordan, one.
No, no, my.
Okay. Matt, did you want to clarify something?
If I may, if you look on the, on the schedule that looks like this, down, you'll notice under, on the third line below, kind of breaks down the rationale, that currently there's one trolley company with two trolleys. On the average, it's eight visits per day with 18 passengers per visit. So, you have 209 days, they estimate over the course of a season, eight visits, and then times 18 passengers, that's how they backed another 30,000 visitors. So, that's the rationale that was employed there. On the back, you'll notice the red, we have two, two estimators involved in the estimating of traffic volumes. JK2 would be Jim Kearney, and KK2 would be Chris Cutter, our park coordinator. So, this is based on their experience in being in the park, and Chris, especially on a, on a multiple-day basis, I would say. I think that's KK would be you, Chris.
That was an invalid.
Oh, okay. Pardon me. Oh, it could be. Okay. Oh, sorry. Kerry Curtis. CC, Chris Cutter. KK, Kerry Curtis. Okay. Pardon, pardon my, try to involve the shorthand, but this was based off their experience with looking at traffic volumes on a, on a, on a seasonal basis. And that's how they broke into the, into the number of visitors and then, you know, looking at, and they did know what the estimated average ticket prices were based from the experience and, and, you know, research. And that's kind of how they backed into that number. So, that's why they came forward with the recommendation that they had, because they felt it was reasonable, but it wasn't, you know, it still wasn't going too far into the, the extreme, extreme side of it. And that's why they felt that, you know, it is doubling from where they were, but they felt that the 3,000 was artificially too low in comparison to what the volume of, of visitors that, that were coming through.
Counsel Strah.
And so, specifically, to try to tease out these numbers a little bit more. So, what they end up having, but then it doesn't take into account the growth over the next few years, is what the season pass times two is assuming $15,000, and then two season passes. So, they're plugging in the 2022 numbers, is my understanding, in justifying it that way. But, yeah, it doesn't take into account whatever growth may occur over the next three years, but that always seems to be the case with a lot of this, is, and it's all estimates as well. Who knows? Maybe the economy collapses and people keep, stop coming to Fort Williams. But, so I'd, I'd make a motion.
Hold on to that point. Are these? So, just to clarify for everybody's benefit, this is per vehicle, though, right? So, when, when you're making the point about there's one trolley company with two trolleys, though, this is, this is per trolley, though, right?
It would be.
Yeah.
It's a pass, I thought.
Yeah, but pass for the trolley, right? So, to address your point, Counsel Devereaux, that, well, what if there's more trolleys added and there's more?
Okay.
There's more passes issued. So, that, that should be a dynamic number regardless. Same thing with any of the other vans, limos, tour operators, things like that. It's not, it's not per company. It's, it's per vehicle.
Okay. That's great.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Counsel Adams?
Matt, do you, I don't know if you know the answer to this. Is the per-person ticket price for a trolley similar to what it is for the other vehicles? Did they consider that sort of thing?
That I cannot answer. I don't know the answer to that question.
Say that again, Counsel Adams.
I was just wondering whether the breakdown, like the per, per-ticket, essentially, per-head price for the trolley is similar to the other modes of transportation, of whether some, because there's also a note about maybe this will alter, alter behavior in favor of investing in minibuses. Are we trying to encourage minibuses over trolleys?
Go ahead.
Right. No, that was just, that was just, I think that's just a postulate, postulation, just to see, thinking out loud, will that may inspire other modes of vehicles.
Can I answer any of these?
What's that?
Can I answer any of these?
If anybody has any direct questions, by all means.
With the ticket prices, I was just going to know, we've, we've heard that they're all over the map. There's both the price to the end consumer versus the price that the vendor actually receives, because they're a middleman. And then, the buses are anywhere from, we've heard anything from like 20-something a seat to 40-something a seat. So, it's all over the place, so.
I just mean our, our ticket price that we.
If, if we charge.
Set.
In translating that to how much we're in effect charging per seat. Ah, I see what you're saying.
I'm just struggling to do the math off the top of my head. I'm just struggling to do the math off the top of my head.
Any other questions, discussion points? Still no motion on the table.
So I was I'm ready to vote, but at the same time, it sounds like there's a lot of questions people have outstanding. So for that reason, I'd say we I move that we send this to a workshop with the Fort Williams Park Commission in the near future.
Motion to refer this to workshop? Is there a second?
I second.
Counsel Adams, is it any discussion?
I I do I I agree, and I think referring this to workshop is a good idea. I just would like to thank the parks committee for following through on this request from the council. I think what they've laid out is reasonable. Forward to ask a few more questions.
Other discussion? Counsel Deveraux.
What are we asking them to do? What do we want them to do?
My understanding is that we want them to come to our next workshop that this will be on the agenda for, to have us talk to them more about how they arrived at these particular rates and any additional thoughts that went into coming up with this fee schedule?
Counsel straw.
And a key aspect of all this is this time around, we've now laid out potential rates for the next three years. So if anyone is watching this at home that's involved in the industry or otherwise in the audience, we're now discussing this. We have something proposed for the next three years that's laid out. So hopefully you won't feel as blindsided this year, even if it takes another month to do this.
Counsel Adams.
I was just going to say, in terms of scheduling, I know our next workshop, I just looked at the calendars, also our caucus, but I don't know if other counselors would be open to meeting earlier, maybe so we can. Because I know last year or in the spring when they came to us, one of the issues was the timing. So I just want to make sure that we do what we can to get to this quickly so that everyone can plan ahead for the next season.
So we don't have another workshop till late November?
We have one in mid-November that follows the election on the 5th and that that is usually the caucus for determining leadership and things like that. I agree with you. I would like to do it sooner rather than later. I have no objection to scheduling an additional workshop, either later this month or in the early part of November prior to that, so.
I agree.
I agree.
Is there any desire to have a workshop on the 28th, which is an open open evening? I do know that the.
What date?
On October 28th.
October 28th is the ordinance committee meeting.
Oh, it is, isn't it? Sorry.
Yeah. Don't double book me.
I know, try and, oh, shoot, okay.
Would it be possible to put this as the first agenda item on the workshop on the 12th and then just have the caucus following this agenda item?
The 14th, do you mean?
I'm sorry, yes.
We have the appointments committee meeting before our workshop that day. That's the date we set for our annual appointments. We set that at 6 o'clock before the the town council workshop on that day.
I think you were just talking about at the regularly scheduled time, have it be the first item and then excuse the counselors. If if there are counselors that are not going to be part of the next council, that they would be excused. Or not, they're still part of the council, they'd be welcome, but they don't participate in the caucus, but.
Okay.
So we could we could do that. We could use the existing date of the 14th. My only concern with that is that it's following our regular meeting on the 13th. I would have I would have preferred to bring this back to vote on at the 13th. So if we can find a date preceding that, that would be preferable to me.
The 6th of November?
The 6th.
That would work for me.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman. One thought could be, not to be presumptuous towards the council, but we would put that in as an item to have on the November 13th council agenda, thinking that the council would be able to get the information that they may need to make an informed or more comfortable decision on the following week. So if we could, we would post that agenda that day on the 6th for the meeting on the 13th. And then you'd have that be able to be acting on it the following week if that if that would please the council.
That's a good idea.
Does the 6th work?
Yes. Works. So can I amend my motion to make it to send it to workshop on November 6th?
That'd be great. 7 o'clock?
Sounds good.
Great.
So moved.
Any other discussion? So we will, all those in favor? So Wednesday, November 6th, 7 o'clock, in this building, likely Jordan Conference Room, we will discuss that. Hopefully there's folks from the Fort Williams Committee that are able to be there.
To be honest, Jim, speaking with Jim Walsh and Jim Kearney in advance of this of the meeting, felt that this was really just an update to what the council had already asked for. And I had indicated to Jim that.
Yep.
Probably just going to go through, so I apologize for adding you an extra meeting, so.
No, I I think it's fine to take the extra step. So we'll do that.
It is a good opportunity to talk to them about the master planning as well because I know they wanted to have a workshop with council, so that's you could double.
Yeah, why don't we add that to that? Okay. Next item is number 145-2019, consideration of accepting purchase of a parcel of land in conjunction with the Hemlock Hill Drainage Project. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this? Seeing none. Matt, do you want to give us a little background here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, what we have this evening for action on the council is looking to purchase a 1.62 acre piece of land, which is the a portion of a piece of land that is owned by Mr. and Mrs. Bennett on on map U 3354B. The parcel is located on Oakhurst Road. It's kind of it's it's part of a larger parcel that they own, that's still remaining owner in ownership of a portion of that that remains. But this is to help us do a stormwater management approach. Right now, if you were to drive over to Hemlock Hill, you would notice a nice new fresh coat of base paving that's down, as well as some new installations of some drainage infrastructure that's there. We've earlier in the council's agenda, you voted on easements from the Clancy's and the Branches that are part of this part of this project. However, in order to dispose of all of our water onto this additional land, we're looking at purchasing this parcel from the Bennetts in order to have a place for that stormwater to final find its final resting place before it is absorbed by the earth and evaporates. So that's kind of why we brought this forward. We started with the the prior owners. Bob actually reminded me today that this discussion goes back to 2010 when this project was initially started to be thought of. And we've been working on this for a very long time, but now with a great amount of work from Mr. Malley, as well as Tom Leahy and Mr. and Mrs. Bennett and Mr. and Mrs. Bennett's attorney, we've come forward with this quick claim deed, as well as the language that's that's acceptable to both parties. Their concern was that, you know, we didn't want to have anything built on it as far as the structure, if something ever changed. It's all pretty much an RP or resource protection land anyhow. So what we're looking to do tonight is to get the council to approve us to purchase the land, as well as pay for any legal expenses that come with the cost of the transaction not to exceed $1,500, which was a fair estimate by both attorneys to to help get us across the finish line.
Thank you, Matt, for that explanation. Is there a motion to approve the purchase as just outlined by Matt?
So moved.
Counsel Deveraux, is there a second? Counsel Jordan, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Great. Next up is item number 146-2019. Previously notified the manager and finance chair that I need to recuse myself from this item due to personal friendship with the applicants here. So I'm going to stand down for this one. If you don't mind, I'll just continue from right here unless. All right. So next up on the agenda is is item 146-2019, 21 Ivy Road tax acquired parcel. First off, is there anyone from the public that would like to make any comments on this item? Seeing none. Now, Matt, could you give us a little bit of a background into this? In particular, how in the world did the town end up with a disconnected little subchunk of land within a subdivision plan?
That would be hefty, Counsel straw. Thank you. This parcel is what you call an erratic, I guess would be the best way to describe it. Going back and Dr. and Mrs. Halter purchased their house about 14 years ago on Ivy Road, and life was fine up until earlier this summer when they decided to have the property surveyed in advance of some construction they were thinking of doing on their property. During the during the process of having their property surveyed, they were found they found that their what they had always considered their side and backyard had a lovely oddball shaped parcel that is currently being assessed and owned by the town of Cape Elizabeth. Back somewhere along the lines of when they just did the the plan for that neighborhood and chopped the lots up, someone forgot to include this part of the description in a lot. So it was kind of an orphaned parcel that that sits out there. I read through the deeds, went through the old plans and looked at all the survey work and found that this was what they was called part of Lot 101 that existed out there. Well, the assessor at the time, being a good assessor, went in and found that there was a piece of land that existed on the face of the earth and assessed it to the owner of the original development. The owner of the original development never paid any taxes on it and therefore, over the course of times, roughly around 1955, it was foreclosed upon for non-payment of property taxes. And everything was fine for the next 65 years, until tonight. So I went over, spoken with Moreno Mera, the town planner. There is absolutely no interest whatsoever by the conservation committee to do anything with this land because it is basically Dr. and Mrs. Halter's side yard. And you also have, I spoke with Bob Malley, we went over there and physically looked at the parcel. You can see it, it's got a lovely piece of ledge sticking out from it with some grass over the top and is currently has no use for stormwater, drainage, any infrastructure, no municipal use whatsoever going forward. That's why tonight brought forward the recommendation that the parcel be quick claim deeded to Dr. and Mrs. Halter. They were happy enough to help get pay the town's legal expenses that do come forward with the transaction to get it transferred over to them and so they can go on with their lives and actually it may be worth more to the town from the tax revenue it generates than it will be by any renumeration that the town would receive. So that's why we brought this forward tonight with the recommendation to as it exists.
Thank you for that background. It's a mouthful. So any discussion at this point on the topic? Any questions for the town manager? All right. So I guess a key aspect that you touched on there, just given the fact that we just voted for a $10,000 transaction for a little over an acre, this is a much smaller chunk. As you noted, it's a it's not a actual lot, it's a circular, it's a oblong shape of land within someone else's lot. And as you noted, the do we have any guesstimate as to the the fair market value? Is it de minimis such that we can kind of check our boxes and say, give it they're in effect paying the legal fees to cover it? Is that sufficient to compensate the town?
Basically, the amount of square footage that is being transferred, that's I think that's a fair fair exchange. Yeah, it's it's very de minimis because there's no access and it's literally, as I was talking to staff today, about the size of the table area that we have in the Jordan Conference Room when it's fully constructed. So it's really, it's really an oddball piece.
With all that, looking for a motion.
So moved.
So looking for a motion that the town council convey the town owned property identified in the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds as part of Lot 101 and identified in the town assessing records as map U 04 Lot 022 to Julie Halter via municipal quick claim deed. And as compensation, all legal expenses related to the transaction be paid for by Dr. Jeffrey and Julie Halter, 21 Ivy Road. In addition, the town manager is authorized to sign a quick claim deed on behalf of the town as drafted and deeded acceptable by the town attorney.
I see.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Right. Right. Any discussion? All those in favor? None opposed? It's unanimous. With that, turn it back over to the town chair.
Next item is number 147-2019, consideration of authorizing the energy committee to entertain requests for proposals for a solar project on the town's landfill. Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak on this? Nope. So as we discussed at our workshop last little more than a week ago, the energy committee has come forward with a couple of different recommendations, most pressing of which is an opportunity to pursue installation of solar arrays at the cap landfill adjacent to the recycling center. The outcome of our workshop was that we were in agreement that this was a good opportunity and the next good step would be for the energy committee to draft and work with the town on the issuance of an RFP to that effect. So I'll be looking for a motion to do just that.
So moved.
Counsel Adams, is there a second? Counsel Jordan, any discussion? Counsel Gabrielson.
Curious, so I think the energy committee's done an excellent job pulling together information on this. Their presentation was very thorough and I think it's excited to see the town move forward with this. Do we have a sense of what the timeline for pulling together an RFP might be? And then I presume that the RFP would then come back to the council for adoption or are we authorizing the town manager to issue that RFP tonight?
I believe we're authorizing the issuance of it tonight, which I agree with. I don't think we need it needs to come back to us. What would come back to us, as we discussed at our workshop, is the energy committee will work to review the responses to the proposals that they get and parse those out and come back to the council with a recommendation on a specific proposal, if there is one to move forward with, and that we would then authorize that. So other discussion? Counsel straw.
I just want to thank the energy committee for all their hard work on this and also for sitting through our meeting until this point in the evening. So thank you all.
Agreed. This is really exciting in my view and is the result of some really great volunteered expert time and talent. You know, we talked at the beginning of the meeting about openings on committees and things like that. Here's a good example of of one that has produced some great work and we're thankful for that. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Next up is another energy committee item, number 148-2019, fulfilling an unexpired term on the energy committee. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this? Seeing none. Having received the resignation of a previous committee member, Jennifer Healy, who we thank for her service on the committee, it is the recommendation of the appointments committee to appoint John Volz to the energy committee for a term that will expire 12/31/2020. Is there a motion to that effect? Counsel Adams, is there a second?
So moved.
Counsel straw, any discussion? I'd just like to thank John Volz and others who are interested in this and seeing no other discussion, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Next up is number 149-2019, state of Maine bicentennial celebration committee charge. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this? Seeing none. As we again referenced at the beginning of the meeting, we're looking to establish a bicentennial celebration committee. The charge is included here tonight. So is there a motion to approve the committee charge for the ad hoc committee, ad hoc Maine bicentennial celebration committee?
So moved.
Counsel Jordan, is there a second? Counsel Deveraux, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Item number 150-2019, registration appeals board nominations. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this? Seeing none. We're required by main statute to have a registration appeals board, and that board consists of three members and two alternates, representation of each of the major political parties. The nominations are here on our agenda tonight. The Democratic Town Committee has nominated Kimberly Monahan with an alternate of Karen Hessel. The Republican Town Committee has nominated Tim Thompson with an alternate of Nancy Thompson. I'm looking for a motion to confirm the nominations to the registration appeals board as presented.
I see.
Counsel Deveraux, is there a second? Counsel Adams, any discussion? Counsel Adams, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Next is item number 151-2019, Metro Regional Coalition Council Resolution. Seeing nobody from the public wishing to speak on this, we discussed at our workshop about 10 days ago or so, with Chris Hall from the Greater Portland Council of Government, an initiative that's being undertaken by GP COG to ask regional councils and governing bodies to make a commitment towards helping the, to improve and, and to make improvements in the regional housing crisis. So we've been asked to consider adopting a resolution regarding our commitment to that Chris, I'm sorry, Jeremy, you're our appointee to the Metro Coalition, was there anything that you wanted to add to this?
Not specifically.
Great. Matt, you want anything?
If I may, you will notice on one item, or a couple of subtle changes, or changes that did take place within the resolution, towards the bottom of it, where Mr. Hall, when he did make his presentation to the council at the workshop, saying that the council should put its local flair on it, so working with Maureen O'Meara, the town planner, brought forward the language specific to this element from the comp plan. And that's why you see, as you get to the bottom, pretty much the last whereas is expanded to incorporate two of those different recommendations that came from the comp plan. And that's, and that's where you see that that differs from the original one. And if you see any typos, please forgive me, because I rewrote it, didn't have it in the word. I think we, I captured them all, but that is the two elements that we did add towards the end, which is to give it more of a Cape Elizabeth bend versus what might work for a different, one of the other communities in the Metro Regional Coalition.
You're missing an S after household, the fourth whereas, but I was going to bite my tongue, since you opened it up.
That's okay. We can make that, we can make that change.
Do we have a motion?
We do not.
We do not. Jeremy, would you like to make a motion?
I would. I move that the council adopts the resolution on affordable housing as presented in the agenda.
Is your second? I'll second. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Are folks reading, or?
I have a question about undertaking a housing diversity study. Is that something that our town will undertake, or is that something that the coalition is undertaking?
The town will, that was from our comp plan. Both, both these items are directly under the comp plan.
I understand, however, it says undertake a housing diversity study with the goal of completing by 2025. So, okay, no further questions.
Counsel Straw?
I mean, it, it, it's kind of a, it's a resolution, it isn't something necessarily etched in stone, but we, the comp plan has the other ideas, like we, I think it incorporated the cottage development plans and things like, so there, there were other proposed solutions in the comp plan that this doesn't capture, but it's, it's a resolution, so I'm fine with it as written, so.
And if I may, having recently attended the Metro Region Coalition meeting where we discussed ongoing goals for that group, continued, a continued focus on meeting the region's housing needs is going to be part of the work of that, so I expect that likely other ideas will emerge as part of that process. The idea here is really to just get all of the communities that are in the region to make a statement recognizing that we understand that this is a problem, and committing to take some action to address it. That's kind of where we're at at this point. I think there will be more to come.
Any other discussion? Counsel Adams?
I like the last part of it, where we're actually stating the resolution, which I think frames it to, as, you know, we'll be adopting and improving policies and incentives in our community, but it also then says to contribute to achieving the overall regional goal, because as we discussed at that meeting, I think Penny brought this up, that this may not be attainable necessarily within the structure of our community, but we do want to do what we can to improve access to housing generally.
Thank you. Counsel Jordan?
I'm in support of this, of the resolution. I always just ask the question, how do we make it live? How do we make it part of what we do? And so, how do we keep it in front of ourselves as we're making decisions? And I just throw that out, it could be an answerable question, but I would hate to see for this to sit on a shelf, because this is a critical problem that needs to be solved in the area. So it's like, we have to figure out a way to have it live somehow. You want to say something?
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
You may, and I was going to add something too, but go ahead.
Just as Mr. Hall had said last week, and I know from being involved at the Metro Regional Coalition, I think this is one of their touchstones that they're looking at, so I think-
So to keep coming back.
It'll keep coming back. This is aspirational, and what they're looking at is to have the, the communities of the Metro Regional Coalition take up this resolution, and then bring this forward from a legislative advocacy side as well. So I think this is just step one, I think, in a very long process, but one that is, has been endorsed by, by the board to move forward and to keep this as a, as a significant regional issue, because it doesn't seem to be going away anytime soon.
Good.
The thing I was just going to add is, in two months' time, we'll be coming up on developing our 2020 goals, which I think this would be an appropriate thing to insert into that as well, so.
Awesome.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Last item tonight is number 152-2019, Authorization for Banking Relationship. Seeing nobody from the public here to speak on this, town manager and the finance director have come to us with the recommendation of working with Katahdan Trust Company. Matt, do you want to talk about this briefly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be brief on this. We had some maturing CDs that were coming forward and ready to be renewed. Through our finance director and myself, we went out to RFP to solicit responses from all local banks, as well as throughout the region, as well as throughout the state of Maine, to have them provide us with a proposal. We received responses from seven different banks. Katahdan Trust came back with the strongest, with the strongest offer at 1.86% for the 12 months, and so that was the, the, I guess you'd call the actual high bidder that we did receive, so that's why we made the recommendation to establish a relationship with Katahdan Trust, and then to move $5.2 million over into there for a CD for 12 months.
Great. Is there a motion to authorize entering into this agreement?
So moved.
Counsel Straw, is there a second? Counsel Adams, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you.
That's unanimous. Seeing nobody here to speak about anything that was not on our agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counsel Jordan, second? Counsel Adams, all in favor? We're adjourned.